I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the pledge and remain standing as Pastor Kathy Sweet from Monticello Methodist Church, Queens, says.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, the last time I was here it was like Christmas and Easter all together, and tonight it's like the Sunday after Easter. Let's pray. Gracious God, for our leaders, for the decisions that they have to make, for the people who will be impacted, we lift them all up to you. Amen.
All right. Roll call, Jill. Walkers on the mic.
No, I just had the wrong one out. Mr. Ferricks?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Harland?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Kim?
Thank you. There are no one signed for participation tonight, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, approval of documents and actions listed as follows. Claims report, claims dated July 23rd, 2019 through August 12th, 2019. Meeting minutes, City Council meeting minutes, July 22nd, 2019. City Council public hearing meeting minutes, July 22nd, 2019. Permit report, July 2019. Police report, July 2019. And treasurer's report, June 30th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments before we vote?
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Mayor's report. The rehabilitation projects for the Bridge Center Street from Market to the Corporate Limits and Marion Street between Piatt and Market Streets began today. Construction activity is anticipated to be completed by early November. Commuters and residents utilizing these areas and routes may expect some delays. School begins this Friday. Please be aware of the traffic affiliated with that, but let's make sure that we're watching for bicycles and children. Upcoming events, there's a Lions Club Fish Friday, this Friday, beginning at 5:00 PM at the Community Building. Nitro Madness Challenge Series, a road track event for RC enthusiasts, this Saturday, August 17th, 7:00 PM. August Steam Weekend is this Saturday and Sunday at the Monticello Railway Museum. Road trip to our friends in the northern and southern parts of the county with the Mansfield Homecoming and Apple Dunking Festivals, both this weekend. And the Summer Singers finale concert will be held at 4:00 PM on Sunday at the Monticello Methodist Church. The mayor sings, Alderman Koon sings. I think he's singing a solo even, so I will be taking attendance to City Council, just wanted you to know that. Lynn sings in it too.
And Rodney's wife.
Oh, and Rodney's wife, that's right. And her. Anyone else that I've missed? Moving on. New business. Ordinance 2019-40, an ordinance establishing the Monticello Business District, approving a business district plan, authorizing the imposition and collection of a sales tax within such business district, and approving certain actions in connection with the establishment of such business district. Is there a motion to waive second reading?
So, is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a vote, please?
Mr. Jones? Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Ferricks?
No.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2019-40?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Kelly, you have anything you want to say? Or Terry, I'm sorry. I get mixed up all day.
Well, real quick, staff presented the possible business district about a year ago to this date, August 13th. It's followed up with Keith Moran and his request about City Council on October 9th. City Council budgeted $20,000 in this year's budget to do this district plan. The public hearing was held on July 22nd in this room at 6:30 before that council meeting at 7:00. Notices were published in July 3rd, July 10th, addition of Pike County General Republican. Follow-up electronic correspondence, mailings, and staff conversations ensued with business owners and property owners located within the boundary that we had information on. So, it's been discussed on several occasions dating back a year from now, so Kelly and I are more than willing to answer any questions anybody might have.
Anyone have questions? Comments?
Wendell? Just quick question in Section 5A. The 1% of the grocery receipts from sales made in the course of such business and then a business district service occupation tax is also imposed at the rate of 1% of the selling price of tangible personal property transferred by servicemen as an incident in sales of service. What do you mean by sales of service? Sales of service. What would that be? Do you know?
So, anytime somebody performs a service and provides a part, that sales tax would be on the service rendered for, or that part itself?
On the part, not label.
Not label. We don't have who services the part.
Parts that are incident to a service that's performed wherever, okay?
So, if your HVAC guy comes and has to put a part on there?
Right.
I understand.
Repair, repairs made to, right. Okay, thank you, just wanted to clarify.
Sure.
That's it, that's all I got.
Thanks, anything else? Hearing or seeing, not going to have a roll call, please.
Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to track date update discussion only. Kelly.
Yes.
One for two, that's good.
I get my visual here, I talk about the different parcels, which sometimes get a little hairy. So, we went into, and you know, we've been very anxious to get this developed since the process started a long, long time ago, not just in 2005, but...
Hey, can you turn the middle one off this one off? My eyes aren't what they used to be.
So, just...
There we go.
So, again, just to remind everybody, Pepson is this rectangular site right here, the Reader Field property is right here. So, the ones outlining rooms were the ones associated with the Pepson remediation project. And then track date is this tiny little parcel right up here that the city acquired in 2016 from Pfizer. And part of the agreement was that the city would, even though the city did not put the contamination, or it's petroleum-based, the city would, to the appropriate process through IEP A to get it remediated on Pfizer's dime up to a cap of $180,000. So, the initial reason behind acquiring that property, as you know, there's a kind of a hairy curve right here. You get a lot of people that walk to the pool, ride to the pool during, and not just to the pool, but throughout the year. And then during farm season, some grain trucks will utilize that as well. And so, we, that was kind of the initial driver behind acquiring that property. And ultimately, we didn't know if IEP would allow or acquire the city as one of the remediation efforts to put an engineered barrier or a road over it. So, even though it's not a very big parcel, you still have to connect to it, so there's a cost associated with that. So, since then, we've kind of shifted, now that we know IEP no longer needs to acquire that road, we are kind of leaving it a little up and ended once it is remediated up to the developer for the, all three of those parcels. So, the last kind of formal conversation we had at the council level regarding the Pepson property and so forth, the council directed staff to hold off on development of the parcel until we knew whether or not we needed to build that road. And earlier this year, until you happily leave IEP, it was, earlier this year, I think it was February or March, IEP said that, except for a new action plan, you no longer need to, or you don't have to build the road. And so, because of, again, the cost of the road and whatever goes there, we not even warrant that, we're kind of holding that off until we get the, an idea of what's going to go there. So, to date, the city has spent about $90,000 since we acquired the property, majority of that being to prepare the comprehensive site investigation plan and remedial objectives report for IEP A. Those have all been reimbursed and we're about halfway to the $180,000. So, there's about $90,000 remaining and about 60 of that is allocated for the remediation itself. We advertised for bids in July, and what remediation would mean for, again, that tiny parcel is to remove the top four feet of soil and landfill accordingly. It's not something that they'll just let you dump, but it's not something that requires a lot of attention either. And then put clean fill over that. We did have some interest in contractors doing that, but we received no bids. So, after discussions with contractors, because this is literally a very simple project for a lot of excavation companies, and there's a lot of companies very familiar with this type of work, it came down to the fact that there is no shortage of work at this time. The benefit to this is that this is something that can happen in the winter when a lot of contractors have time. So, our environmental engineer is pretty confident that we'll have a favorable bid if we re-advertise this, saying the work will be done in winter. Our initial advertisement for the bids had like a 45-day substantial completion. He wanted it done before fall. But he did, our engineer reached out to several contractors. They are very interested in this, especially if it can happen in late winter, so January, February. So, we see no reason why that won't occur. And on that note, we do have an agreement, again, back from 2016 with the engineer for not to exceed amount. So, it's not just preparing the bid documents and submitting everything to IEP A, but also the follow-up and then closing out for a report, because the ultimate goal is to receive a no further remediation letter on that property like we have the other two. So, that's kind of where we're at with track dates. The Pepson Reader properties, some of you might already be aware of this, but I'll maybe do the history of that again. The city went into a brownfield cooperative agreement with IEP A in 2005, basically saying, here is some money to help mediate. They would like something that creates jobs, property tax, and sales tax. And in, as part of that agreement, if the site is leased traded or sold for 15 years from that agreement date, Monticello would agree to repay a portion of the funds to the, a portion of the profit of the funds to the agency. So, if we sell it, it'd be a portion of that, no more than 80%, no less than 0%. The other thing that we have, one thing that needs to be stated is, we can't just go to IEP and say, what if we did this, what if we do that? They want someone to sign up a dotted line letter and 10 or something like that before they'll tell us if, if in fact any repayment is requested. And as part of that agreement, the city also committed TIP funds to that. And again, this is often the amount of profit realized from the property. And this was a phrase, I think, of about $100,000 back several years ago. So, to our benefit, again, because the property is in the TIP, we have the ability to say, we want to sort of tighten development in that area, kind of like what we did with the Moore Building. We want something that is going to obviously generate jobs, property tax, sales tax, and with the intent of the program that received, was received for this. But we want something that is going to lend itself to our downtown and create foot traffic and kind of extend. That's something that, that statement was, you know, over and over again in all three of our plans, comprehensive, strategic, downtown development. And we don't have very many opportunities to expand our downtown. So, because it's in the TIP, we can submit, publish a request for proposals, saying we want this particular thing. And also similar to the Moore Building, because it's in the TIP, we have the ability to deviate from that 80% of the assessed value. We're not saying we need to do that, not saying we will have to, just letting you know. So, the next steps that staff's going to take, because I have four different developers that are interested in this site, we are asking if the council would be okay if we went ahead and went forward with the RFP, just not including that little parcel at the top track date. We would like to publish the RFP and advertise for proposals this fall, meaning next month, or whenever it is done, and then have consideration of the project to council by next winter, or excuse me, this winter. We would need a Phase 1 environmental side assessment plan, which is common for a lot of properties. I don't anticipate anything, because we've already received no further remediation, but as our ownerships and things, we need to have one anyway. And then we will need an updated proposal, because I think our last one was 2015 or so. So, that will be initiated, those both will be initiated here shortly. And then staff will bring a draft request for proposals to council for your blessing.
Okay.
So, that's as good.
Comments or questions? We're supposed to be talking this discussion. Don't dummy up now. We can't vote on anything other than, can we give you direction to go ahead and have the...
I think what we're interested in right now is, does anybody see a problem with us moving forward at this point, not including track date? I don't think it's going to be a hindrance to the project if it's unconfirmed, so.
John, I'm here, that's right.
But I don't think it's a hindrance. So, unless we hear any objection moving forward?
I'd just hate to see the city start with track eight, but...
I don't think we will be.
That's cool.
Like I said, if it's one of those things, whatever happens to the other properties, if it just becomes free space and we give it to them or don't give it to them, it's not, it's not going to be a legal right for this project there, I don't think.
Is that the picture you have there of the Pepson property?
Yeah.
On the north boundary line that's extended east past the railroad, does that property belong to that? Or have you taken that little triangle section out to indicate that the railroad tracks are not part of the sale?
That is a very good question, and I'll have to look at the legal for that one. I believe that's ours, though. There might be a reason to. You want to, have any thoughts on this?
I don't think it's included. I don't think it's part of the Pepson property.
Okay, well, I'll check on that for you, thank you.
Just a question, but since it was squared off and then cut back, I wondered if it went, actually beyond the tracks on the north side.
Yeah, I can check the legal and...
Okay, thanks so much. Quick question.
The, we were proceeding with, with the bidding and getting that soil removed from track eight this year and doing that RFP. The hiccup was, we, we didn't get any bids. So, there was three plan holders, I think, and contractors' workloads, nobody was interested in doing it at that time. So, we'd like to proceed with the bidding, re-advertise, rebid, something in work to be completed December, January, move forward with the request for proposals, see if there's any interest out there.
When you measured it up, how many yards of dirt are you figuring are taken out?
Shoot.
I have that.
Four foot deep and all of it.
And it's, I don't think it's the whole...
It's not the whole.
...site either, though. But remove four foot of depth, bring in clean fill, abandon and fill the five monitoring wells. I mean, it's a week's worth of work.
Yeah, I was going to say, not a big project.
No.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Do you have enough direction now? Moving on to Item C under New Business, recreational cannabis discussion only. You have something to say, please do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I, a little bit of the background, and I think this is a topic that we'll be discussing at several City Council meetings, and rightfully so. There are just, well, every community throughout the state is talking about this subject. Most or some have already started, just like we have. On June 25th, 2019, Governor Pritzker signed the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. In doing so, beginning on January 1st, 2020, it will be legal for persons 21 years of age and older to sell, possess, and use cannabis for recreational purposes in limited quantities. We have no say in that at all. The City Council discussed recreational cannabis at the regularly scheduled City Council meeting on July 8th, 2019, where city staff and attorneys were directed to draft a moratorium ordinance on recreational cannabis to afford to City Council more time to further study and explore any and all legal options provided to local municipalities under this act. Draft ordinance was prepared as directed and presented to City Council at the regularly scheduled meeting on July 22nd. During that meeting, staff was directed to not proceed with the moratorium ordinance at this time, and that such an ordinance could be presented to the City Council at a later date if needed. This act provides certain authority to the state of Illinois, as well as certain authority to the local municipality. The state is authorized to issue up to 500 total dispensaries through 2022, including up to 185 dispensaries in 2020. The act also prohibits a new dispensary from opening within 1,500 feet of another dispensary, and provides that the local municipality may prohibit recreational cannabis dispensaries, infusers, processors, and craft growers. It gives you the right to prohibit those activities, or you can significantly limit the location of such recreational cannabis facilities by ordinance. If the local municipality determines to allow recreational cannabis dispensaries, infusers, processors, and craft growers within its jurisdiction, they may enact zoning regulations, such as specific zoning districts where it would be allowed by right, or it would be allowed by conditional use, off-street parking requirements, signage requirements, hours of operation, and others, as so desired, such as permissible onsite consumption or lounges. The act allows for municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax. The unit of local government may impose a tax on the grocery receipts in 0.25% increments up to 3%. So, tonight, I provided just a four, five, six questions that maybe could spur some discussion as, as we go down this road, that we have no other choice. And I think the first one that, you know, is, is the city of Monticello going to allow this inside the corporate limits of Monticello, or do we need to, was the desires of council to opt out? And based upon that discussion, we could get into the weeds about zoning and, and other items that...
Any of the weird...
That was good. My text. That's good. Sorry.
Sadly, I caught it, too. I should have... So, I guess, I think you have the questions in front of you, and if you don't, I can go through them real quick right now, or we can kind of start with that first one and see where things play out. Or go, if we do allow it, what would kind of some of the zoning questions be?
Do, do we know if there's been any changes since the last time we talked about this? I mean, they, they put it in, they enacted it, and I'm sure they didn't stop talking about doing stuff.
I do know that the Illinois, or, yeah, Illinois Municipal League is pressing for a additional legislation to clarify some of the things that aren't clear in the existing law, and that the General Assembly and the governor have both said that they are supportive of doing so. But as far as I know, nothing has, beyond discussions at the state level clarifying these things, I don't think that any judicial's been done.
Do we, do we know, do we know, have the people who are, have an interest in this, in developing this, have they, have they stopped moving, or are they working now to come up with plenty of actions to get their businesses up and running as soon as they possibly can? Is it...
And actually, we, I was, I was notified today of an interest. So, I'm not saying, I would advise against what she hit down the road, if this is what the council wants to do.
So, to Jeremy's point, the trailer bill is what they call it. Local editor shot me off a little article on it. All, a lot of municipalities are, are just struggling with, you know, what, what does this interpretation and that interpretation? And we've done that here. So, IML's leading that charge to request that trailer bill that's going to be coming down the pipeline pretty quick, as far as some, some additional clarification. I think the first, the first round of licenses, and these licenses are not cheap, to get a license, you're talking $230,000 at the state level. As a dispensary, as a cultivator, you're looking at $100,000 for a license. So, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of costs up front. And in the first wave of applicants, and I think Jeremy might, might have spoke to this last meeting, is, is the medical marijuana facilities are going to have the first right, and there's, I think, one in Champaign and one in Urbana, and they're going to have the first kind of right to, to submit for a secondary site.
Right, which they can do maybe immediately? It's, it's soon.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's right around the corner, if not already. August 1st, so...
Now, after the last meeting, as I recall, we, we, we weren't interested at that time of imposing a moratorium, and you shared information with our attorneys, I assume. And I know that our attorneys, it's their responsibility to keep us out of lawsuits and out of difficulties. And I assume their response was what, Terry?
And I, everybody, did you receive that?
I read, yeah.
In, in real, real short, the, the, down and dirty is, is the attorneys will always have this group's backs, and, and they will be always conservative and make sure that you guys, like the mayor said, don't end up in a court of law. Their, their concern is vested rights for somebody to come in. And currently, this would be a retail use, and a retail use is allowed by right or conditional use in, it's, it's allowed by right in a business or IC or I-1 zoning. So, you're, you're downtown, out there near the West Interchange, all the way to North Interchange, everything in green or orange, as, is that right? Would be allowed by right. They wouldn't need a conditional use or anything.
They would, actually, in the West Interchange. There's a church out there.
Oh. If, and, and there's sensitive areas that they cannot...
Yeah, 1,500 feet, and, I mean, they come on, I guess, on the other side of the...
Other side of it.
But, you know. So, we probably just need to decide, maybe you just talk about what, where we are, about whether we want, you want to have it here.
And since we really are almost at square one still, and I was putting that correctly, I mean, we really haven't put a lot of thought into this, wouldn't a moratorium be what we should be thinking about right now, rather than waiting, or letting somebody jump in before we have enough time to come up with a reasonable, and a reasoned response and
Some communities are...
Are saying no right now, I mean, it's just...
They're, they are saying no.
Yeah.
In, in some communities, so, the venue for any kind of zoning amendment, I know there was... was some interest on the public hearing at the council level, and that's fine, workshop or public hearing, or whatever we want to call it, is fine, but the course of action is to go through the Planning and Zoning Board for any amendment to the zoning codes. And then, obviously, that public hearing, that recommendation comes to this board. And some are actually doing that. There's a resolution passed at the council directing Planning and Zoning Board to hold that public hearing, just to keep, to put people on notice.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, if I understand what you're saying, you're saying it can't come to us anyway, it's got to go through the Planning and Zoning Board before it ever comes to us, is that correct?
That's the avenue for any zoning amendment.
So, even us doing a moratorium, is that put in the cart before the horse?
No.
The more primary council have to go through the planning and zoning board.
So, what you could, what I've seen in other communities, these questions presented to you tonight, there's a resolution passed that you guys are asking, requesting the Planning and Zoning Board to address these outlined questions or concerns at that public hearing. And it's not just an exclusive this list, it's a full vetting process, you know, let the public hearing, the public weigh in.
Now, can I clarify a little bit about my mind? That's where they don't have the right to do it already, is what we're talking about now. It doesn't have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board if it's by right, correct? In the green areas, so that won't...
Correct. So... As long as it's not near a church, a school, a park, there's certain criteria.
Right.
Kelly, the interest that you have, is that a new business interest or an existing So, back to, I guess, Terry's first question, is this even a possibility? Because if everybody says it's not going to happen here, then, I mean, there's not a whole lot of points, there's not a whole lot of point in pursuing the moratorium, if we're, at the end of the day, just going to say no anyway.
But I think that having a moratorium gives us a little bit more time to think about without, that's my way of thinking, I may be wrong, but it's...
Well, then, keep in mind, the earliest you could do this would be for the September moratorium or directing the...
Right, exactly.
The earliest you can do it would be for the September PCV hearing, so you had those to come up when you make that decision.
Which takes us back to the first question.
Right.
Do we want to do it?
Do we want to do it?
The attorneys will continue to highly advise to do, pass the moratorium.
But are we talking about the moratorium? Do we want to do the moratorium? Are we entertaining whether we actually want to have, sell cannabis in our city? What was your question?
If the consensus of this group says to opt out, then to mute point.
That I'm making.
Right, exactly.
I think it needs more than tonight's discussion to make that decision.
Definitely. I have it on both sides. I know where you're coming from, but we haven't touched, we haven't begun to touch the public opinion part of this. We don't, we don't need to make this decision. I want to hear from the administration, the churches here in town. I want to know what the Chamber of Commerce thinks. I want to know what the other business people in town think. I want to know what the general public thinks. You know, we can't say, the eight people around this table, we make some great decisions, but this is not, this is way beyond that. We can't make this decision.
We can't make it tonight anymore.
No, but you're going to have people, you know, when it comes down to it, if they think they got shorted on their opportunity to present their yea or nay, I don't want to sit in the middle of that. You know, I want to know what Monticello thinks about Monticello selling cannabis. If the eight of us aren't selling it, you know, somebody else is selling it.
That said, the public has been invited to...
I was going to say.
Participate. It was in the newspaper, and we see all the participation down.
Well, sometimes you got to kick them twice.
Well, and we'll have this discussion again in two weeks, so...
While I agree with what you're saying, my only concern is, we have, none of us have stated anything we think. I'm not saying we got to vote and make a decision, but I'm looking around my table, I'm like, I have no idea what you all think, and that's...
I'm myself am torn.
I'm with you.
I mean, I have, I have, I mean, I can see the benefits of bringing it to tax, tax benefits and so forth. I mean, we can gain a lot from doing that, as far as bringing that in, but then, it's almost like you lose the innocence of small-town Monticello if you do that. And I think that's what's unique about Monticello at the same time.
But, I'm torn as well, for obvious reasons, but I'm also torn because alcohol is legal here.
Right.
And if they're basing it on the same idea, they're patterning it after alcohol, how can we say no?
Right. And they're going to go buy it somewhere else.
They're going to buy it somewhere. I think that's just, that's tough.
And there's another point that needs to be considered, which is that by saying no, you're not uploading, you're not getting rid of sales.
Oh, it's not, yeah.
Right.
It's happening anyway.
Right.
It's happening right now, here in Monticello.
Right.
Yeah.
So, really, the only difference we're making, by saying yes, ultimately, really what we're saying is, okay, we accept it's going on, Alex, tax it, because it's an opportunity to...
And let's put it in the jurisdiction so we can get that...
Exactly.
I think the difficulty in kind of also what Tammy's talking about, being torn, and the comment that you kind of had made, the innocence of Monticello, I think that what makes it so hard is because of the, maybe a stigma that is behind the specific cannabis thought, right, of, you know, of the, you know, I mean, I don't use it, I've never sold it, so, I mean, I wouldn't be a, you know, very good customer by any means, I probably wouldn't be a very good business person to sell it. But to Alderman Jones's point, too, I think, I think we need to look through this through the lenses of almost a business decision, and take the emotions out of it. I think it is difficult to discuss it, because you say, well, I'm torn, but if, you know, I'm for it, well, does that make you a, you know, a hypocrite? Because now you're in favor of, you know, cannabis consumption? I don't think so. I think, you know, it's got to be a very real understanding of, from a business point of view. We're going to see it, it's just a matter of how we're going to deal with it.
Exactly.
And I'm for one, and probably more in the allowing it, and taxing it, and determining exactly how such use is going to be within our town. And, you know, there are communities that are opting out of it now, I mean, I'm only under the belief that it's a matter of time when they're going to figure out, well, that didn't work.
Yeah, it's just like dry counties, how many dry counties are in the state of Illinois now?
Right.
It just, you know, it's a harsh reality.
Yeah. So, I mean, for me, it's just the emotional part of getting past that particular stigma to not be so torn and look at it through those business eyes, my thoughts.
Mayor, could I ask, if you're beneficial to...
No, no. Council's having a discussion.
And we could also allow a dispensary to come in, but not necessarily have the lounges and so forth.
Right.
So, we can specify on those terms, right?
Exactly. Exactly. So, Terry, if, just, no, you're good going in?
Right, because there's like, three or four different kinds of businesses that are outlined in the law, and craft growers, and infusers, and I don't know what that even is. You can allow, or whatever, right, you can allow any, all.
Okay.
Right, so that is, that is a discussion that we have, right, is...
So, to that point, and I've had several questions about infusers, that's the cookies and brownies that are infused.
Oh, okay. That's a weird education I have, thank you.
So, is there any way to, like, see a map that has all of these prerequisites outlined, like, for instance, it can't be here, you know what I'm saying, like, it has to be a certain amount, yeah, so we could see where... Where the place will be. Yes, where it is supposed, could only be, I guess, because those places already exist, like the churches and the school, you know, so we could see that kind of thing. Yeah, I think that would be interesting, to be able to see that.
I think you'll find they all overlap.
Excuse me, you're out of order. Okay. Once more, you're gone.
When would be the ideal time we'd want to hold a public hearing within the zoning plane?
Well, because of the public hearing requirements, we have to advertise that, like, next week, so...
It would be the next, not next week, the first month.
It would be in the September 1st.
What, you'd kick it to us in about October, right? Would bring it to us in October.
Last meeting.
Last meeting or September.
Oh, okay, that quickly, yeah.
Because the third would be the fourth Monday afternoon.
Does the moratorium have to go to them? I thought that was smart.
That was an ordinance to this council?
Exactly right. So, that does not have to go to them?
So, if you wanted to entertain the moratorium, it would be two weeks from tonight?
Exactly.
That nobody, that's the attorney's version of protecting us against somebody claiming vested rights.
You got it. And we want to protect ourselves, because, as I said, nothing has stopped moving in the background. It's like, you know, flies on a carcass, it's, or maggots, whatever, getting ready to jump in, so, I'd really like to see the moratorium talked about and passed at the next meeting, and go ahead with the hearing with the PCV.
It can't hurt to have a moratorium.
It can't hurt, no, that's right.
I know, you feel like you're dragging...
No, no, it can't hurt, because ultimately, you could lose business as a result.
Yes.
So, it can't hurt.
Well, but, as we've said, though, this is not, it's in process, but even these people don't have a license yet. Is that fair? So, I mean, they're still going to be...
But the thing to keep in mind is, your license application has to include the location.
So, you got the approval for it.
Which means that if we pass a moratorium, they may simply say, thanks, but no thanks, we're going to go someplace else.
And I don't think that that's a bad thing. If they're trying to rush us into something, and we say, we're going to pump the brakes...
I don't think they're necessarily trying to rush us into something.
They're trying to rush, they're trying to come now.
Well, yeah, but that's not rushing us into something.
That's putting pressure. That's putting pressure. I feel pressure, I don't know.
Yeah, I know.
Anyone else? Do we have a consensus on what we should, how we should proceed or not? Should we consider the moratorium at the next meeting and talk about...
Wendy's mind is going.
I think you can consider it, yes. The only thing that, Tam and John have spoken to it tonight, the chief's sitting down here at the end of the table, pulling his fingers off, which pisses, because he knows what we're talking about. We have preached for years, when your 16-year-old children now were babies, we were preaching, don't mess with marijuana, don't do this, the whole program, how many years have we presented it, chief? Years, and years, and years, because it leads to worse things. Is there alcohol around? Sure, but we never pushed alcohol that hard. We never pushed as hard as we pushed for marijuana. And now, all of a sudden, it's, you know, folks, it's not such a bad deal, we're going to step back and let it happen. How, you know, you say you've got, I have those same feelings, how do I look at those same kids today and say, you know what, buddy, changed my mind?
We did change our minds.
You know? It got changed, really got changed for you.
Exactly.
And they're not done, they made changes in the law today, just today, about who could dispense it. And the governor stood up and said, we're considering the fact that you might be able to keep your FOID card and still have marijuana, we're considering that, you know, that's not off the table. You might be able to have access to firearms and still have marijuana. They're changing their rules every day.
Exactly right.
You know, every day. So, the only thing that tears me apart is that, man, I was there, I told them, don't mess with it, don't ever mess with it, I don't care, don't mess, don't smoke it, if you got friends that smoke it, tell them not to, stay out of it, leave it alone, yada, 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 and now, all of a sudden, you know, and I'm not saying it's all about money, I'm not, you know, I don't look at it that way, but how do we flip 180 degrees the other way and say, well, we changed our mind? You know, it is what it is, it's going to be around, you get the opportunity, once you get old enough, buy it, smoke it, do what you want to do with it, da-da-da. I don't know, I don't know how to do that. You know, in my heart, I don't know how to do that. So, that's just, you know, with the moratorium, I'm not against that, I'm okay with that, if you want to pursue it, that's fine.
I do have to say a couple of things regarding this. The reason we flipped 180 degrees is because science shows that it's not as damaging as we thought it was, one, and two, the idea that using marijuana leads to other harder drugs has been a month over.
But that's not entirely true, because there's arguments on both sides, there's arguments on both sides.
It's not an argument, it's...
To you it's not, but it is an argument.
It's, the research says otherwise.
And there's research that says it is.
I have to tend to agree with both of you.
Yeah, I think we just haven't had, and that's what he's saying is true.
Yeah.
But we haven't had the opportunity to slowly bring that to the youth of today, and introduce that on a, all of a sudden, it's just, well, here it is, you know? I don't know what they understand, I don't know whether they understand that or not, I'm not sure. We got great kids, but, boy, we've let them a long ways down this path, you know, I don't know. So, but the moratorium was good, and I appreciate, Jeremy, both of you, what you're saying, I just, it just makes me, in my heart, I'm not sure.
I think we just need, the moratorium gives us time to not worry about taking time. That's all I'm concerned about.
Certainly, I'm on that step.
I want it done right, so that we don't have to backtrack and fix a lot of things that we let slide through, so...
But I hope, Steve, you're writing down things, please, if you put, if you publish this in the paper that we're having this meeting, you know, that the zoning commission, put in there, please, please attend, and let yourself, let your voice be heard.
It's more than the garbage truck.
It's very important to us to get some guidance. I truly don't think the eight of us can sit here and make this decision without some input from out of...
I agree with you, Wendy.
Just don't think so.
Put that on the PCV September, and the moratorium on ours next time.
So, I'm hearing the moratorium ordinance back in front of this council next meeting, and then, we'll add, we'll put every public notice and do all the work on the Planning and Zoning Board public hearing September.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on, Alderman's reports, John, I'll start with you tonight.
No, sir, got nothing.
I thought you'd be fired up.
Jeremy? You know, I stopped by and attended the, didn't attend, I stopped by at the very end of the jet meetup this weekend, and just wanted to say that if you haven't been out to Eli Field to see them doing stuff, this stuff, it's just really cool.
I bet it is. I'm going to go to Rodney now.
You're going to skip Wendell?
Right now. I'm trying to keep people on their toes.
I see. I've done nothing other than thank you for talking with me, Jeremy, and...
Tammy.
I don't have a...
Mayor?
Wendell? I'll come back, I'm sorry. Doovers of the city.
With John, you're fine.
Go ahead.
Only, I've been asked, fortunately for me, by Mr. Sheehan at the high school, to again be the voice of the Sages Sports this year. I will be back in the tower. Our first two football games are on the road, our third one, about the third week of September, is at home. I'll tell you right now, I will be announcing that you are on the field of the state champion Monticello Sages, so, we hope that this year's team shows up and shows us what they got, so, we'll go from there. But by all means, I encourage everyone who attends to come out and support him. I'm not sure what we're going to do about parking, folks, don't ask me about that, it is a nightmare.
Ooh, I could stop there.
If you can walk or ride your bike, I encourage you to walk or ride your bike.
Someone yard.
You know, when you go to IVC, when you go to Chillicothe, would you stop up on North Santa Fe at the, what's the name of that place I tell you? Track-In. It's a little, it's a little family restaurant, they have the best coleslaw in the world, would you mind bringing me a side of counsel?
The Track-In, I'll put it there.
Funny.
I'm good.
I have nothing.
John?
It popped in my mind, but I wanted to give a shout out to, is it, Kelly, is it Mama T's? She went through...
T's, she went through, I've had, was that the last boot camp we just had? I sat in on the last Monticello boot camp that we had, just not for that I had a business I was gonna run, but for the perspective of what that boot camp does in the program. So it was very enlightening to, to take that all in, but there was a gal in there by the name of...
Tara.
Tara, and she bought the pizza place in Bemet?
Making Pizza.
Making Pizza, and bought it, renamed it, and I'm telling you, she was so gung ho in that class, asking questions, so it was great to see that come to fruition for her and make that purchase and roll that out. I was very excited to see, to be in that class with her and see that, that, her dreams come true, it was really, really cool.
That is nice.
So, kudos to the boot camp program.
That's a great program.
She brought us pizza too.
Can you have many signed up for the next session?
We have five of the Monticello programs signed up, and it starts in almost September.
So there's still time if you want to sign up, right? Okay. Chief?
Yes, I had to put my glasses on for this, my rain. Mayor, earlier Friday, October 16th, is the first day of school in Monticello. Please keep a few things in mind, traffic will increase significantly in the morning hours and the afternoon, expect delays during the hours of 7:30 to 8:30 and 2:30 to 3:30. Watch for stops, school buses, loading and unloading, it's against a lot of overtaking. School bus with the stop arm is out, and conviction of the violation results in suspension of the individual's driver's license. Also remember the Illinois district laws pertaining to distracted driving is a violation to use a handheld communication device while operating motor vehicle. And if you have young kids walking or riding bikes to school or bus stops, remind them to watch for cars, buses, and please encourage them to use sidewalks and crosswalks whenever possible. Also, as mentioned earlier, partnering with the high school is not going to be easy, so be patient around there, and we'll be out there watching to make sure that everything's done so that the traffic can flow normally, but cars will have to move into neighborhoods for school hours.
City administrator, Terry?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the, the discussion tonight on the cannabis. If you have any questions, please get with me, I've, I've done more research on recreational cannabis than I care to do. I've looked at other communities across the state, I've looked at law enforcement, the finances, the economic development departments. If I can't answer it, I will get the answer for you, please don't hesitate to get ahold of me. Mayor mentioned Center Bridge and Marion Streets are started today, all they did today was put some signage up on the side roads, and I think the next step, they'll start with the concrete work, sidewalk ramps at the intersections, probably on Bridge Street, possibly tomorrow. The contractor and, and the staff are meeting with Top Flight Grain tomorrow, talk about harvest and what they might expect and the construction schedule. I've notified the school district of it, I think I'm the one's been communicated with. It will be a headache for a little while, but just bear with the contractor and us trying to maneuver traffic in and around, there's, there should always be at least one lane of traffic. If you got a driveway on Marion Street or something, you are going to be impacted, you should be able to come and go of an evening, but there will be times that you will be impacted. Washington Street Project, Market in Washington, there's a ton of sightseers that drive by there every day.
I didn't today.
If you could just kind of avoid going east west on Washington Street, it would be greatly appreciated. We can take pictures and put them up here if you want to see and...
But still go to the businesses?
Yes, park and walk down the side, and all the businesses are open and you have access, park and enjoy the, the whole downtown as you go down there. You might, might have noticed, we've got a open position, the fleet mechanic, fleet maintenance mechanic, Josh, Jo...
Josh Moore.
Josh Moore. Submitted an application before he was, came on board here. That application trumped this position, he'll be relocating to Florida, it was kind of his dream job, he regretfully has to leave, he was enjoying his time here, so we'll be accepting applications till, I think, August 23rd for the fleet maintenance mechanic position, so that's all I have, Terry.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I need a roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Thank you, when we go into, when we come out of closed session, there'll be no business transpired, so we will just adjourn the meeting, go home.